Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for April 18th, 2023. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the folks at home can probably see, Chair Josh Levine is unable to be with us tonight. So I'll be, I'm Mark Gold, I'll be filling in for Josh and start with a remote option statement. This is, I'm Select Board Vice Chair Mark Gold. I'll confirm you that all members in person who are anticipating on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Dan Zworko?
Here.
Tom Lecusa?
Here.
Neethamapathy?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, Corinne Meissi-Munz?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar is posted on the agenda and the town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comments. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you're joining the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute your phone. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only, and each individual will be afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If there's anyone in attendance this meeting who's recording it, please let us know at this time. Hearing none, we will move forward. The first item on our agenda are meeting announcements. I have just a couple of meeting announcements for this evening. Outdoor recreation area conditions assessment. The town of Long Meadow solicits public input and feedback regarding outdoor active recreation areas via a virtual survey. All Long Meadow residents, users of Long Meadow recreational areas, and stakeholders are encouraged to fill out the survey, which is designed to support the Outdoor Active Recreation Area Conditions Assessment and Strategic Plan. A recreational initiative that will bring the public, municipal officials and staff, and private supporting organizations together to establish goals and priorities for maintaining and improving outdoor active recreation areas for future years. To learn more about the project and to complete the survey, please visit longmeadowma.gov/activerecsurvey. All one word, activerecsurvey. As a reminder, the nominations are now open for Long Meadow Citizen of the Year and Citizen Commendation Awards. The nomination deadline is tomorrow, April 19th, 2023. For additional information about the awards and to submit a nomination, please visit longmeadowmas.gov/civicalerts. The 2023 Annual Town Meeting is set for Tuesday, May 9th, at 7:00 PM in the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. The Town Meeting warrant can be found at longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting, all one word. It will also be delivered via the reminder to all Long Meadow households on April 20th this week. It will also go to people who have opted out of reminder deliveries. The deadline to register to vote at Town Meeting, if you are not already a registered voter, is Saturday, April 29th, 2023. Please stay tuned for information on the warrant, information sessions, educational videos, and more in the next couple of weeks, and announcements will be on our town website. Finally, the Recycling Commission, in partnership with Valley Green Shredding, is hosting a free paper shredding event on Saturday, April 29th, 2023, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Long Meadow High School Student Parking Lot. The event is open to all residents, no pre-registrations required, no businesses will be allowed to use the shredding facilities. Please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicsalerts for more information. Again, it's 9:00 to 11:00 AM, so a little shorter than it's been in the past. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda are resident comments. Mike, is there anybody in Zoom with resident comments?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, and then Select Board comments. Do any Select Board members have a comment? Dan?
Thank you. So I just wanted to cover a few topics. I did organize my, our second cleanup, townwide cleanup with the Sheriff's Department on 4-8. So we had over 30 people, residents of the Sheriff's Department as well as Sheriff Department staff. We cleaned up around Bark Hall, Long Meadow Street, by the pull-off. It was about five hours long, and then we went up to Wolf Swamp as well. So I just want to say thank you for everyone who had participated. And that's all that I have.
Thanks. Great.
I said a couple of things I wanted to comment about. First, I just want to thank the Long Meadow Fire Department. Last week, as you guys were watching the local news in the morning on Wednesday, there were two stories involving them. First, they put out a house fire in town. And second, they rescued a dog from Laurel Park, got it the care that it needed, and reunited it with its owner. This, coming in a 24-hour period that Chief Dearborn said saw an increase in calls. They had about 17 calls to respond to within 24 hours. And so despite the increased frequency, they did a great job, so, you know, they deserve the town's gratitude. The second thing I wanted to mention was that we were just talking about the opioid settlement and the funds from that during the budget process. Last week, we saw that Commonwealth Massachusetts was part of the settlement with Juul, which Massachusetts will receive, I think, about $43 million in that settlement. And so something to keep an eye on for us to see how they decide to distribute that money and whether we'll kind of receive it in a similar fashion as the opioid settlement.
Great, thanks. Any other comments?
No.
Great, thank you very much. Going to move on to Town Manager's Report. And Corinne, will you be giving that? No, Lynn, welcome back, Lynn. Lynn is on.
Hi. Thank you, yes. Yeah, I will give the report for tonight. We have first up the quarterly legal expense update. I won't read through the chart of all the numbers, but it is posted on the website, and you can see where we are trending from this quarter to last quarter for the various legal expenses that we have. The most notable would be, I think the biggest increase we saw was the DPW casework that's happening for the 21E and the eminent domain case. The next topic we have is the Wolf Swamp Fields Maintenance. A bid for maintenance for Wolf Swamp Fields was awarded to Specialized Turf Services. The contract is for one year, starting April 4th, and runs through March 25th of 2024. And it was a total award amount of $143, $482. There will be up to two consecutive annual renewal options at the town's sole discretion. The scope of the maintenance work includes aeration, aeration deep-tine, overseeding, top dressing, nutrition applications, plant protection, mowing, and a few other odds and ends. The maintenance of this will be overseen by the DPW. The Parks and Rec is overseeing the remaining pieces of the renovation project. They're currently in the process of ordering temporary signs to encourage people to use trash receptacles and not leave trash on the field. The water to the facility is just about ready to be turned on. And once that's done, the concession stand in the bathrooms will be open. In the meantime, there are portable restaurants on the east side of the facility. Two facility attendants have been hired. And lastly, to help keep the fields in pristine condition, it requires an effort on everyone's part. And this includes keeping dogs off the fields. Yard signs will be placed on the facility to remind people that dogs are not allowed on any athletic fields. The yard signs are temporary until the permanent signage comes in. A state budget amendment was filed by State Representative Brian Ash for the House FY24 Budget to assist with maintenance of sports fields. This is for Long Meadow. The amendment was filed for $100,000. The House debates the budget the last week of April, and then we will receive an update after that to learn if the amendment made it through that process. It's not a guarantee, and this amount is subject to be modified if it does make it through. So a huge thank you to Representative Ash and Chief of Staff Robin Frichette for approaching the town to ensure the needs where our needs were considered by filing this amendment. And as you may have seen in the Fire Department Monthly Report and some social media we put out early, or late last week, the rehab of Squad 4 was completed ahead of schedule. The vendor knew what an important piece of equipment this was for us, especially with the weather that we've been experiencing this spring, and they worked quickly to complete it. The work definitely exceeded all expectations that the department had. They're working to get the vehicle back in service, and as of tonight, I can report that it is back in service. And this apparatus is critical to fighting brush fires. And we received it just in time because this, the brush fire hazard has really picked up. Eversource Gas Work, this is not related to the reliability project. But attached to my report tonight is a fact sheet prepared and distributed by Eversource describing the cast iron natural gas line replacement, that's, that work that's proposed in Long Meadow over the coming construction season. It describes important routine work that's underway to ensure the safe, reliable service to existing gas customers. The Eversource crews working in town will be provided with a supply of these sheets to hand out, to share with people if they stop and ask them what this work is about. And again, this is not part of the reliability project. And attached to my report is a copy of that flyer that will be handed out. And as was stated in the announcements earlier, the Active Recreation Area Conditions Assessment Survey has launched. As of Friday morning, we had 360 surveys that were completed, and about 570 people have started the survey. The survey is open until early May, and I would just stress that this is an absolutely vital component of the Active Recreation Area Conditions Assessment. So I know it could take people a little bit, you know, up to 15 minutes or so to fill this out, but it's hugely important that we get this feedback. And the Great American Rain Barrel Program closed on April 12th. I know at the April 3rd Select Board Meeting, the Assistant Town Manager had announced that we were making a push in these final weeks, and we really were hoping to have 100 or more barrels ordered. And I'm very happy to say that we reached that goal, and we had 140 barrels sold. Barrel pickup is at the DPW on Saturday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day, from 9:00 to noon. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Lynn. Is anybody, by the way, welcome back.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Lynn?
I guess just one quick question. For the Eversource Gas Work, have people been reaching out, like confused that it is part of the reliability project? Or are you just kind of anticipating confusion?
Yeah, great question. So we, anytime Eversource is doing any work in town, at least the Fire Department's, the Fire Department gets phone calls questioning what type of work this is. And workers on the street also get that, the police detail, people get the questions. So this has been a common occurrence anytime Eversource is in town. So I'm happy that they're going to be handing something out, because hopefully it will lessen calls that departments are receiving and provide more information. I don't know that it's been happening this construction season yet, but we do have a history of it happening in prior construction seasons.
Okay, great, thank you.
Lynn, can we make sure that that document gets posted on our website so it's available to residents?
It is, actually. It's on the homepage.
Great, great. Dan?
Thank you. Lynn, quick question. On Wolf Swamp Fields, regarding the irrigation. So I've been coaching there for a couple of weeks now, and I haven't seen any irrigation turned on. Are we having issues with the irrigation system, or we just haven't turned it on yet? And then also, when will the, I guess, when will folks start working on the, I guess, lawn care or fields themselves in terms of mowing and things like that?
Sure, so we've been working with the contractor that's hired to get, to nail down the actual schedule. We've, I think we've accelerated that because of the heat that we had last week. Grass is going to need to be mowed sooner than perhaps we were anticipating if we had had a normal spring. So we're nailing down that schedule now. I don't have the exact date of when they're going to mobilize on the property. And in terms of irrigation, I can double-check on that, but I do believe that the irrigation would happen at hours that you likely would not be at the field. We're not going to irrigate at 4:00 in the afternoon or, you know, 9:00 in the morning. It would generally be done at the late dusk, early dawn hours so that it really can soak in. But I will double-check on the status of that.
Gotcha, thank you.
Lynn, does somebody have a report on what's been going on? I live down the street from Glenbrook Fields. There's been a lot of work done there, big keep off the fields. Has that been, is that part of your program?
Yes, it's, it's part of an internal department of Public Works and Parks and Recreation. We've been working on this since late summer, if not, yeah. We had been planning for this, actually, yeah, late summer, we started the conversation. The DPW, in coordination with Parks and Rec, ordered a hydrocedar. But unfortunately, by the time we received it in the fall, soccer had already been in full swing, and we couldn't rest those fields in order for us to hydroseed. So the earliest that they could get on there was end of March, early April. And so DPW has really been all hands on deck to try to rehab that field as best we can with the resources that we have available right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll move on to old business, and we have distributed the minutes from the March 20th Select Board Meeting. I'm looking for approval for those, a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. Any comments, corrections, changes? I'd send to.
Or March 20th, whatever.
Okay, then all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Passes 4-0, thank you very much. Next discussion topic is a remote meeting participation policy. This was introduced at a, at a prior meeting. And Mike, there were some comments at that meeting. Did we make a couple of changes based on that, you know?
The document that we have from that meeting wasn't changed, but we did receive feedback from Town Council on, on some of it. So Lynn, did you want me to speak to that, or do you want to talk to that?
I'm happy to talk to it if you would like.
Please do.
Yeah, so I did review what Attorney Belcher Timmy had sent back for comments. There's some areas of this policy that conflict with other areas of state law. His suggestion was to really take our time with this. Now that the open meeting law exemptions have been applied for the next two years, there really isn't a need to address this right now. And so he suggested that, you know, if we didn't have a pressing need, we could pause on this for a bit and really hone in on what the policy should say. And Mike and I were speaking on this earlier this afternoon, and if, if really one of the outcomes that the Select Board would like is that applicants be in person, we could make that recommendation or suggestion to them when they apply for things. If there's, you know, liquor license hearings that you really want to see them in person for, Mike can certainly, as the main point of contact for the Select Board, tell them that the Select Board's priority is that you're in person and that they would entertain an exception for that if they sought approval from the Chair in advance of the meeting. So I, in looking at your policy, I think what was extended by the legislature kind of covers everything you're looking to do, but if you wanted to do something more specific about people being in person for specific types of hearings, you could do that, you know, just by verbally talking to them before a meeting.
Thank you. Is there any question? I, I, my response, Lynn, would be, we started this before we knew the legislature was going to extend the remotely participation rule. And so I guess it, you know, our council is correct that we can probably take our time, but I think personally, I'd like to see us have something. I don't know what his objections were, but if we could follow up and just make sure we have something so in the next six to nine months, we get something in place that'll cover us beyond that. Anybody else have, Tom?
I think it would be a little awkward to try to, because a lot of times we don't find out that there's an applicant for a liquor license or something until right before the meeting, and it would be difficult for us to have a vote on saying that they need to be here in person. It would be nice if it was a permanent policy saying that that was important.
I think what Lynn and Mike had talked about was that the Chair could approve that exception.
Okay, we would need a vote.
The meeting.
Lynn, we would need a vote. We would need.
No, it wouldn't be a vote. It would be the Chair. So the applicant would reach out directly to the Chair, so there was no breaking of the open meeting law or anything either. And the Chair would be the one to decide in the moment.
So then it's, it's not a policy, it depends on the Chair. And if we change Chairs and they decide, well, we don't need to see them, then it's not a uniform plan that we would all vote on and agree. And that's, I mean, we can agree on it and ask the Chair to follow up on it, but then, you know, there's room for error. And I, I, you know, I think that's.
Tom, I agree with you. I think, I'm falling back on what Josh had said, that even without this policy, no lawyer with a grain of salt representing somebody would say, don't worry, you can do it remotely. I mean, and if they are doing it remotely, and because they're extenuating circumstances, they probably couldn't get here anyway, you know, they're homebound or some, or some other reason. But I, I think we can, you know, if there are hearings that Mike sets up and other things, we can make it clear that the Select Board encourages, you know, people at those kinds of hearings to be here in person. But you're right, we, you know, without a policy, we can't require it.
Right, we can't require the Chair to do it every time.
Well, the Chair can't require them to be here. The Chair can only inform them of what are preferences. That's the problem. The problem we have, Tom, is that state policy allows remote participation. You know, we, we would need to supersede state policy, which is, I think, what Attorney Belcher Timmy told us, told Lynn was a potential issue. If we want to supersede that, now how can you say, well, the state says you can participate remotely, but we require you to be here? And say, wait a second, who are you to require we be here? We can say, we strongly suggest you be here, or, you know, the jury will look more favorably upon you if you're there, or whatever you want to say. But that's the problem with the state being the way it is. I assume, Lynn, that's, was the reading that Attorney Belcher Timmy told us, right?
Yeah, that, and there just were a couple of other small things he had pointed out. But like you had said, Mark, this was the best effort because we weren't sure what was going to happen with that emergency authorization to allow remote participation to continue to the extent it was. So he was reading it, but also reading it after the state had adopted or extended the open meeting law provisions. So if we sent this to him before that happened, he might have had a different take, but his review happened after the fact.
I mean, Tom, my take on this is, I agree with you, these people ought to be here. But I also listened to our town attorney who tells us, you know, you don't, this isn't going to help you right now, and you don't really need it, so back off and get it right.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with reworking this.
So I guess what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to just defer this and rewrite it with the benefit of our attorney's input. Because I, like I said, I would like this in some format. I, personally, I believe that, you know, a year and a half from now, when the current remote participation approval starts to expire, there's going to be a hue and cry for them to extend it even further, which they may do that. But, you know, maybe the question, because it works in most communities. But, you know, there are, as we've identified, some exceptions that we'd like to have. And so I think we ought to try to get this in place, and if nothing else, maybe we make it as a, you know, an example that we can send to the legislature. If you're going to renew it, here's some situations that concern us.
That's, that's, that's true, we could send something to them. What are you, other guys, mind putting this off then?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it makes sense to put it off, but I also want to make sure that it doesn't get lost. So, you know, if there's some kind of like, you know, Mark mentioned six to nine months. If we kind of come up with some kind of like target date of when we'd like to have a policy by, just so it doesn't kind of get forgotten about and lost.
So I'm going to put the pressure on Lynn and Mike to say, you know, I'd like to see a motion to defer this for consideration in, let's say, September, because it's six months from now. You know, and, and that'll give us some chance, but it'll keep it on an agenda. Does anybody feel comfortable with that kind of a motion?
Yeah, that's good.
Go ahead, Corinne.
Lynn, do you mind if I speak to this for a minute? And you and Mike had a more extensive conversation today, but I saw Attorney Belcher Timmy's email as well. I think one thing that might happen, and this is just so you're, it's not going to affect the vote you're making tonight, but so that you're prepared, one recommendation that it looks likely to me that's going to come of this is that actually there are multiple policies in here where remote participation, remote participation for the legislature has meant participation by board members, whereas we're in this policy using it to refer to board members and also the public. And so it seems like maybe there will need to be a separate policy for individuals who are not part of the board, who are attending, whether to represent, I mean, mostly to represent any applications that they might have before you or hearings before you, and then a separate policy to extend your own ability to meet, to meet remotely if the state act expires. So what might come before you in six to nine months, you know, might look, might not be one policy, but might be a suite of policies to address the various concerns.
Yeah, that sounds good. Because the other thing that does happen is we have ideas in Western Mass that go to Boston, and then they go, oh, that's a good idea. Yeah, we should put that in a policy, they have to be there in person for our liquor license. We overlooked it, you know, but, you know, so, good.
Right, so, you know, although this is on the agenda theoretically for a vote, and we're not going to necessarily take a vote, I'd like to entertain a motion to defer this.
Yeah, so, I think we have consensus, I don't know if we need to vote.
Well, the only reason I'm looking for a vote is so that it doesn't get lost. Because consensus gets lost, but emotional, put it on Mike's calendar.
So, all right, I'll make a motion if we defer this policy until September, and we review and make a vote at that point in time.
Right, so a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? No, all those in favor? Thank you, passes 4-0. Thank you, Tom, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is for grant letters of support. And Corinne, I believe these are your agenda items, so I'd like to have you, if you don't mind, introduce them. There are actually two of them.
Yes, so what I'll do is go over the scope and timeline and budget for each of the grants. They are related to each other and have very similar, similar everything. And if you have any questions about the grants themselves, I can answer that. I'm not, you have had the letters in front of you, so I was not planning on reading those to you, but let me know if you would like that. So, and again, the idea here is that I'm introducing these letters of support. You can ask any questions about the grant, and then at the next meeting, you would take a vote to have the Chair sign the letters of support. And it does need to happen at the next meeting. Both of these grants are due in the first, in first week and a half of May. So your next Select Board meeting is the last meeting before. I will need to have those. So what, the first grant on here is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant, which most of you are familiar with. That is out of the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and it's a grant that targets climate resilience. So projects that help communities adapt to the effects of climate change. You have to show like downscaled scientific data about what impacts your community is projected to face, and then you have to make the argument that the project will help alleviate those impacts. So both of these grants are around Cooley Brook. And the MVP Action Grant, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP, is to further the work that we have already been conducting with tie-in bond with CPA funds that was to develop the hydrology and hydraulics study that is currently wrapping up with Cooley Brook. So this grant would be to look specifically within the Bliss and Laurel Parks portion of Cooley Brook and the stream bed specifically to develop up to 60% design for restoration efforts and some green infrastructure around the stream banks or around the stormwater outfalls. So that scope specifically will cover conceptual design. So taking the results of the H&amp;H study, that is the hydraulic study that I just mentioned, the Conway Schools Project, which we spoke about at a previous meeting, take that, develop it into conceptual design, run alternatives analyses to make sure that we really know what we want to design and commit to various pathways that might have been introduced. Bring those conceptual designs for public input, and then based off of public input, develop preliminary permitting level design. So that's the 60% design. So that's the 60% design, working with the cons comm, state authorities, federal authorities, whatever permitting might need to happen. That project is a two-year project, and so we would start fiscal year 2024 and end fiscal year 2026? Or no, it would be '24 and '25, and so end before '26. And the budget for that is $300,000. There's a 25% match, as is specified in your draft letter of support. I'm going to talk about the Long Island Sound Future Fund, and then I'll talk about the, the match. So the, the next grant is the Long Island Sound Future Fund, and that's a grant that's specifically put out by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and it targets water quality projects that come into the, in our case, in the Connecticut River, but really any water bodies entering the Long Island Sound. The target is to clean up the Long Island Sound. So in our case, Cooley Brook is interesting because it enters into the Connecticut River, so any water quality issues, et cetera, that we're having with Cooley Brook affects the Connecticut River. And by cleaning up all these small tributaries to the Connecticut River is how NIFW, National Wildlife Foundation, is trying to ultimately clean up these bigger water bodies. So this grant application also targets Cooley Brook, but it's a little bit bigger in scale than the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, which again focuses specifically on the stream bed. The Long Island Sound Future Fund grant looks at the neighborhoods that are feeding into Cooley Brook with their stormwater outfalls, and starts to ask the questions, "How do we work with homeowners? How do we work with the town in terms of municipal right-of-way to sink and slow stormwater before it enters those catch basins and then goes into Cooley Brook?" So we're capturing the stormwater pollution and also the erosive flow coming from stormwater runoff. So the Long Island Sound Future Fund scope includes that green infrastructure neighborhood level plan, which is what I was just referring to, looking at the public right-of-way and other public sites, publicly owned sites within the Cooley Brook watershed. It will also have a residential low-impact development outreach and engagement task, which involves reaching out to all the neighbors that live within any area that drains to Cooley Brook, introduce them to the project, and talk to them about what they can do with their own homes to sink and slow stormwater before it goes into the catch basins outside of their homes. They have a task to work with the DPW to develop standardized green infrastructure. And green infrastructure, in case you don't know, is using vegetated stormwater management instead of our traditional gray stormwater management, which is pipes, pipes. So vegetated stormwater management is sending it through, for example, a constructed wetland to have it be cleaned before it goes into a pipe, or a rain garden, where it's much smaller in scale, but it goes through vegetation, has a chance to sink into the soil before any overflow goes back into our traditional stormwater catch basins. So, working with the DPW to develop standardized green infrastructure design and technical specifications, so we make sure that we're only installing items that the engineering team approves of and that the maintenance team knows that they can take care of. And then finally wrapping that all together into an EPA-approved watershed-based plan. So that is also a two-year project. Very similar budget, $240,000 to $280,000 is what we're looking at right now. Our consultants are wrapping up the scope for us, and I believe I already said it's a two-year project. So with MVP Action Grant, we're zooming into Cooley Brook. With the Long Island Sound Future Fund Grant, we're zooming out to the neighborhoods that feed Cooley Brook. The match is also 25% on the Long Island Sound Future Fund, and we are hoping that we will get both. They can be used as match for each other. So in an ideal world, we're getting both. We have competitive grant applications for both. I have heard from the regional coordinators for each of these grants. So that is our hope, in which case we don't need to document our staff hours for in-kind match, and we don't need to use any cash match ourselves. In the event that we only get one and not the other, both of these projects are doable on their own without the support of the other, and they both have meaningful results without the other. And we will be documenting in-kind match, which I'm working on right now, to draw up what that would look like. And then anything that we can't cover in in-kind match over those two years, we would pull from relevant budgetary line items to cover the remaining match.
Thank you, Tom. So I guess one thing is, what, what's the matching amounts look like? Is it?
Yeah, so the, the 25%, I'm going to use the bigger number, the $300,000 for MVP.
Seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it's, yes, seventy-five?
Twenty-five percent of 300 is seventy-five.
That's better. For, oh, yes, okay, so I, the, the, I'm sorry. It's a little bit more than $300,000 because that's the engineering scope. What I didn't say is that we're doing another really great public outreach campaign, like we were doing with our current MVP Action Grant, where we hired these creative arts consultants to work with the schools, Mass Audubon to work with the schools and the arts. So it, with this project, we'll be hiring the Hitchcock Center for the Environment, based out of Amherst, to work with two years of fourth grade classes, FY25 and FY, uh, sorry, FY24 and FY25's, fourth grade classes across all of the elementary schools, to do field trips to Cooley Brook. They're going to be looking for like bugs and animals in the stream, and they're going to learn about erosion and water quality and how that impacts habitat. And we are also partnering with the Connecticut River Conservancy on both of these grants to help give us that regional support, and they're a really well-respected name as our designated watershed. So all of that to say, I'm anticipating the total budget for MVP will be about $330,000 or $340,000, so I'm anticipating about $85,000 over the course of two years.
Eighty-five thousand, thank you.
Yeah, which would be less for Long Island Sound.
And then, you know, we, I know there's a lot of sediment that's in the pond, you know, at, at, I guess it's part of Cooley, or, well, it's Cooley Brook there, but I, I, as I look at these letters, you know, for me, it would be more, I don't know if we could ever foot in just to mention that, you know, there's a, the Town Fishing Derby is held in one of these ponds, and it's, no longer will be held because it's so full of sediment, and, and I don't know if that, because you mentioned, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you cover it when you talk about conservationists, recreationists, park neighbors, and those who champion a more resilient public infrastructure. But I, I wonder if there's a place you could squeeze in, maybe in that listing there, you know, that it's a location of a Town Fishing Derby, or a former Town Fishing Derby pond, you know, that is now full with sediment. I mean, it's, for some people, that, it just, it's an example of the kind of resource and how this is underutilized because.
However, the grant narrative, that will certainly be mentioned. I, I think in the letter of support, it doesn't make sense to go into too much detail, because really they're just reading it to check off the box, to make sure the select board knows that this is going to be affecting the town's budget and the town's staff time. But the grant narrative, I have 25 pages to get into why we're focusing on Cooley Brook, how Laurel Pond and Laurel Park and Bliss Park are meaningful locations for all of the community, not just the neighbors, what it would mean to have restored beauty there in addition to ecological function and stormwater function. So that would certainly be mentioned in the grant application.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. So my eyes, over the weekend, gravitated towards the 25% number, and I, because I saw it on both letters. Is that pretty standard in terms of these grants, or?
Yeah.
If we go to 30, does that make us, you know, a better chance to potentially win this, or?
So, that's a good question. I, when, for MVP, they give you the scoring criteria, so that you're able to read your own grant application and look at their scoring criteria and say, "Yeah, I think I wrote a good one," you know, or something like that. There's, there's a set number of points for meeting, and you're ineligible if you can't meet that 25% match. So it's basically like a checkbox in the scoring criteria, yes, we met it, or no, we didn't. That being said, last year, the, the current MVP Action Grant we have right now, which we were awarded last year, we were at 29%, not 25, and in the letter of support I drafted for the select board, I made sure to call that out as a, I mean, they see it when they look at your budget, but to call it out as like a flag, just to show, "We're really committed to this. We're going above and beyond." And I, so all that to say, I don't really know the answer. I know we have to meet 25, and I like to flaunt it if we go above and beyond, but given that this is a higher number than what our, I think it's a higher number than what our current MVP Action Grant is. I, I was less ambitious in trying to go above and beyond the 25%.
Yeah, and this would, if, if we could win this, it'd be huge. I did a tour with the Tree Committee back in the fall, and it would just be, you know, wonderful for this area. We went all the way down by 91.
Oh.
Yeah, so, I appreciate your efforts with this.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I just said, so we, when we look at the, the money we put in the Storm Wonder, the Storm Water Fund, you know, would any of those funds be utilized for this?
This, so I've had a brief conversation with Lynn about where we might look for cash match once we have a sense of how much cash we will need to cover what our in-kind match won't cover. And we did discuss the stormwater utility, uh, the stor, sorry, the stormwater utili, utility, stormwater utility. But that being said, I, once, once we have an actual target number that we're trying to reach with cash, I would like to have a meeting with Lynn and with Sean Van Duzen to make sure that we're all in agreement about which, you know, line items are the most appropriate. I, I think the stormwater utility is one that's, what's the word? This is an eligible use for the stormwater utility funds.
Right, I thought that's why we set it up for things like this, any sort of culverts and any sort of rivers or creeks go through towns, so.
One thing, no, no one has asked, but one thing that I would like to point out about the MVP Action Grant is that it's not just looking at the stream banks, but we're also ensuring that the scope is taking a look at the culverts, to your point, Long Meadow Street and Laurel Street, both of which are, you know, they're not old, but with climate change, they are likely undersized. And that you, if you explore the trails around Laurel at all, you might have seen areas in which actually the Laurel Street culvert is being overflowed by water and scoured around it. So both of these will be looking at, you know, the, the, the goal here is not only to improve recreation and ecology and the hydrological function of the stream, but it's, it's also to really ensure that we are able to meet our future needs in terms of stormwater management, in addition to our current needs. With the H&amp;H study, the, it's only a draft memo that's out now. We don't have the final memo yet. But it shows that in a hundred-year storm, so that, that's not a storm that literally happens once every hundred years. It means that there's a 1% chance that it could happen any given year. And given the storm we had this weekend, I think, you know, we realize crazy storms can happen, that those, that Long Meadow Street can overtop during that storm with the current system that's there now. So this is helping, you know, it's an actuality now, let alone in 200, uh, not 200, in 2100 or 2170, what year is it? 2070, 2070 or 2100, so.
Okay, and so the federal infrastructure money that was voted last year sometime, would, would this kind of project be eligible for that money?
Lynn, I don't know if you know anything more about that funding so far. I think we're, I've started to hear about some ways in which culvert, like, work will be eligible for that, but the money is not available yet, and so I think we're kind of keeping our eye on it, but we're starting to hear some things, and this work will set us up for that work. We're not, right now, we don't have any studies around these culverts or any design, but once we have that, after this grant is awarded, hopefully, then we would be able to apply for those funds and say, "We know what we're doing. Here's why. It's a priority project."
That sounds great.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? So this is going to come back at our next meeting for, for a vote?
For a vote on signature, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Corinne. Next item on our agenda are Eversource Projects' telemetry cabinet installation, and is there anybody from Eversource to join us, Mike?
There is, yes.
Give it a shot.
Can you hear me at all, or?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, good, thank you, sir. So, Brian McRae, Eversource Gas. Thank you, thank you for taking your time. This is just a continuation on a project we started last year, so installing telemetry cabinets at existing regulator stations in Long Meadow. So this is for five locations, Converse at Dickinson, Laurel at Farmington, Long Meadow at Bernie, Long Meadow at Wheel Meadow, and Shaker at Leatwood. Two of these locations, Converse at Dickinson and Shaker at Leatwood, were running to an existing telephone pole. All the rest were running to existing underground structures, so existing manholes, to get our electricity. And then we're just, again, running to our existing underground vaults to tie into. These cabinets are safety devices. They monitor what's happening in the station, both outlet and inlet, and also the device status of the overpressure protection. All of this goes back to our gas control system located centrally in Massachusetts here.
So.
I've got a couple pictures of existing ones, if you guys want to see that. Otherwise, I'll just kind of open it up for questions or any comments.
Yeah, I, I, this is Mark Gold. I'd just as soon, you know, ask you a quick question, but I, the, the point is, we've, as you said, this, I think, we've done, completed three in the town of Long Meadow already.
Yeah.
I think several of us do, but I do. Every day I drive by the one that's on Forest Glen. So I can, you know, I was driving by it when it was being installed, and I drive by it now that it's done. I, I have to tell you, my only comment is that I'm glad that we required you to paint the bollards green rather than that ugly yellow color, and probably require the same.
Leave it to note on that, we, we did have a supply issue where we had to paint the yellow ones green, but we actually have green ones now, and that we're going to replace the painted ones, so this doesn't chip off. So, yeah, we, we did have that, and we have plenty of those green covers to kind of cover them up. I know the yellow ones are never popular.
Right, does anybody have any questions for, for presenter? I think we've done this before. I, you know, I, I appreciate you taking the time to come to the select board to explain it. I think it's good that prior, I don't know if you were on at the beginning of our meeting here, where our town manager explained what you were doing, and, and we have an example of the, what we hope is to hand out, explaining what you're doing, and hopefully you will have those available. Again, you know, I, I don't know if we need to require this, but I, I think we need, you know, the bollards protection poles need to be green. That was, that's my only comment. It, it makes a huge difference, in my opinion, especially with some of these locations are on, on people's lawns or on, on drive-through areas. Is this now your, is green your standard color now, or is that something we'd have to specify?
Uh, it's kind of like a Long Meadow thing. Most of the other towns haven't, hadn't, hadn't made us do it yet, but I'm sure once they see it, we'll kind of do it, but kind of the, yellow's the standard just because gas, yellow and gas kind of go hand in hand, but, yeah. Whatever makes people happy, we'll, we'll be glad to do, for protection.
I don't know how the other three people on this board feel, but that makes me happy, so, so.
Well, we have, you know, the one at Bernie Road, along Meadow Street, I mean, that's, that's our main street. That's, you know, everyone goes by there, and we don't want gas cabinets sticking out. It's right at the end of the green, so, you know, anything we can do to have it blend in, you know, it'd be nice to have shrubbery, but I don't, I guess, I know last time we requested that, I don't think that happened either, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think they said that they couldn't, couldn't block it, but, you know, I, I don't know if the, what the right things do, but I'm going to just make a, a motion that we require Eversource as part of these to install the, the poles, make them green for however they do it.
Mr. Gold, if I may, as part of your motion, I would suggest also making it contingent upon any requirements necessary of the DPW and engineering team as well. There are dig-safe permits and other road opening permits that, that are needed from them also, so.
That's, thank you, thank you, Mike. Yeah, so I'll, I'll make the approval of these contingent upon meeting the standards set by the DPW, potentially our police department if, if, you know, crews are needed for something. I know they have them in, in the past, and also keeping everything green.
Second.
Just one more point of discussion. Is there, there's no gas going through these. This is just equipment that would measure what was going on underground, right?
No, there is gas that goes up through these, because the, the sensors are actually in the cabinets.
So Tom, there's, down below, there's like a four-inch or six-inch, whatever, gas line, and then there's a small tube coming up to this that, so the pressure in the gas line goes up into the cabinet. So technically, there is gas, but it's, it's measuring the pressure, and it's actually measuring the flow, too, I believe, so that they can measure. So that they can measure, but yeah, there's no other way to measure the pressure without having something up in those. That's why they protect them with these, these big concrete posts that go down on the ground.
They do have, uh, excess flow valves on the higher-pressure, uh, line, so anything that's not low-pressure, so 10 or higher, we can put excess flow valve. So if that were to get hit, those trip and shut the gas off if there's any type of damage above, that like shears the pipe or tubing.
I'm less worried about that. I, I'm more worried about, you know, the locations. I mean, one is near, uh, Wolf Swamp School, and one is near the JCC, and, you know, those could be potential targets. I mean, you know, I, you know, I mean, if a car hits it and it shuts off, that's great, but if someone were to detonate something, that's awful close to buildings that I'd be concerned about, you know?
Yeah, like, like you're explaining, it's very, very small tubes, it's static pressure, there's really no flow into it. It's just feeding a, a sensor in the cabinet. So there's not that, that much gas in there that I think anything like that could happen.
Now, in your testing, do you have any, any data showing that these could withstand, like homemade bombs and stuff like that?
Uh, no, not, not that I know, no.
Yeah, uh, because, you know, I mean, the locations of these, I don't know. I mean, that's, I mean, one, it's right by the JCC, and we know that, uh, we've had to have police presence there before, and then the others at, at Grammar School, so.
I, I think, Tom, not to, not that I'm an Eversource promoter here, but I think the risk of having a runaway pressure system is greater than the risk of, of a problem with these telemetry cabinets, in my opinion. And I think what, you know, I, I mean, the one question I haven't asked is, where, where are we sending these to? Is it to somebody in Ohio, which was the problem, in Lawrence, Massachusetts, or is it somebody in, on, you know, on, you know, Cottage Street in Springfield that, that's monitoring these things and can see it? But either way, I think we're much better off having somebody monitor the pressure, and, and the, the risk of a runaway pressure is greater than anything else.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, is there any way the location for the, the one at Shaker Road and the one at Long Meadow Street could be, or not the Long Meadow Street, but, uh, Shaker Road and then the one at Converse Street could be modified just further away from those buildings?
The issue is that we're at, like, so we're at existing stations. So we already have existing underground vaults at these locations.
Okay.
And we're trying to put these cabinets as close as possible, therefore, we're not running more utilities across the street, down the road, 'cause otherwise, if we have a vault, let's say Converse at Dickinson, and you want us to block away, we have to run infrastructure all the way from the vault over to the cabinet.
Yeah.
But that's where we're kinda tied to our, like, where that existing vault is, that, that's what's kinda pulled us up. I know, it'd be great if we could move these, it's just we're stuck with what's kinda out there in the past, from the history.
All right, well.
All right, any other, I think it is what it is, Tom. Any other comments? Okay, well, I'm gonna take a vote on the motion, which is to, uh, to authorize the installation of these, uh, gas pressure monitaries, the remote monitoring telemetry cabinets, uh, under the condition that they be all green and they obey any police and DPW requirements. All those in favor? Any opposed? The vote is three to one, vote passes. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Then, what's the timing on these? He's gone.
Oh, yeah, I'm, uh, we're probably at least a month out to getting into Long Meadow, but, like, we'll work with Sean. I know Sean's, uh, we're hitting his department pretty hard right now with our regular replacement work, so I think a lot of it will just be depending on his availability and kind of the war department for mark out, so we'll definitely work with him, but we're at least a month out before we get anywhere going.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, uh, next item on our agenda is street closure application. The first one is for the 2023 Girls Lacrosse Jamboree, and do we have somebody from the?
Yes, I have Coach Rice in the chat. I'm gonna move him in to panelists now.
Thank you.
If it wants to work for me.
Hi, I'm here.
Great, we can hear you, that's fantastic. Can you just, we, we have in front of us the, the road closure application, the map and a comment from the police. Can you just tell us a little bit more about the jamboree? But I'd personally like to have you not only focus on what you plan to do, but how things went last year.
Well, last year, uh, was our first time at the current location of Russell Fields and the High School Fields. And we had approximately 35 teams, uh, roughly last year. We did have a curveball with the extreme heat that we had last year. If you remember, on the day of the jamboree, it was about 95 degrees. But we had, uh, one of our board members paid for the janitor to open up the, um, cafeteria as a cooling station and as, as a contingency, and so we didn't have any issues there. We had police officers at, uh, at three different locations according to the same plan we have now, and it, it went off without a hitch despite the heat. Everyone, everyone had a good time. Fire came through, inspected, they were happy with the vendors and how the, uh, how we had situated them, um, you know, on the street, and the police were happy with, with everything. I think, uh, it went pretty well for everyone involved.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, just, and parking, uh, Tom, look, you said, the parking, was that, uh, worked out okay? You had enough space?
We had, uh, we had the added complexity of having a boys' lacrosse, this is the high school team, alumni game uh, on the same day, and we managed to share Long Meadow High School parking lot. We also had Blueberry Hill School as, uh, as an overflow lot, and then Williams Middle School, just in case. And we never had to use Williams. The way the jamboree is set up, we have the young kids in the morning overlapping a little bit with the, with the middle kids, and then the senior kids are on, uh, are in the afternoon. So spreading out, having it spread out like that meant that we didn't have much of a traffic problem, uh, parking problem at all.
Great, well, I would, that sounds good, yeah.
Any other questions? Josh, I guess my, this is Mark Gold. My, my question is, you know, why are we doing it back on Russell Fields and not on Wolf Swamp Field, and maybe Lynn may know the answer, but I thought this was a one and, one and done kinda thing, that we were only going to Russell Field because Wolf Swamp wasn't available, but traditionally, this had been done on Wolf Swamp Fields and was intended to move back there. Is that not the case?
You're right, and that's, that's an, that's an excellent question, and it was the configuration of the Wolf Swamp Fields. Before, we would have nine fields that we were able to work with. Currently, as it's set up with the two baseball diamonds, there are only two large fields for lacrosse and two bantam fields. So, uh, we went from having nine fields to, I believe, five fields, and there are things about the new Wolf Swamp Field that we can't move. So we're, we're back at this location.
So is this now a permanent, to the extent that your jamboree is permanent, a permanent location for the jamboree?
If we wanted to remain the same size and scope, uh, it would have to be, because, uh, Wolf Swamp is no longer an option for an event of this size.
Okay, no, go ahead, Tom, go ahead.
Well, Joshua, I wondered, uh, because one of the things, when we talked about this, I was encouraged by the fact that you were doing in the center of town, and do you know if people, um, used, you know, facility, went to, had dinner at some of the restaurants right in town? I mean, did you get any feedback on that? Did people comment on being, liking the location because of, um, you know, having stores there?
I did, I didn't get feedback from the shops. We are, we're in communication with the shops because we wanna be good neighbors. We wanna make sure that people aren't going to park there, but Starbucks did a lot of business that day, and, um, I know just from, from talking with them, uh, but in terms of foot traffic, I have a number of neighbors and a number of people that I work with who said that they loved having it in the middle of town because they weren't aware it was going on, and they walked through and they, they thought it was a great thing because they could hear the music, they could see all the girls playing, and it was, uh, it was kinda inspirational for, for some of them, just have a community-centered event right there in the middle of town.
Great, thanks for your feedback.
Any other?
Thank you.
Lynn, I'd be curious on our park and rec departments' take on Josh's comments about Wolf Swamp Field. I don't doubt it, but I know that, you know, this lacrosse jamboree was a source of revenue for the, for the Parks and Rec Department because of the fees they paid for the fields. And, you know, it, as nice as it is to have it in the center of town, it is somewhat disruptive for the, for the day. I know a lot of people just clear out, so I, you know, I don't know what that means, in fact, to say that we can no longer have this at Wolf Swamp Fields, but it, to me, it's a, it's a pretty significant comment if we spent all this effort to upgrade Wolf Swamp Fields because we wanted people from outside of town to be able to use it, and now we're being told they can't use it because it's not configured properly. So I, I'm not looking for an answer today, I just think Barry and the Parks and Rec Department need to know about that. 'Cause this is, this is, this wasn't expected to me, by me. When I saw this, I thought, like I said, I thought this was a one and done.
Uh, to, to be fair, Mr. Gold, uh, on the board, we have dealt with field usage issues and, um, and that's something you would have a conversation with Mrs. Jarndes about, because, uh, Wolf Swamp Field, for all event, that's a new field, it, uh, with soccer and lacrosse, boys' lacrosse, girls' lacrosse, um, it, it's, there isn't a lot of space. In fact, with the two baseball diamonds, it feels like there's even less space than we had before. But again, because of the way that it's configured, we went from having nine fields to now only having possible five fields.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing the point. I, I think the issue for me is that, you know, and I, again, I don't know if you're paying for the use of the fields, and if you are, who you're paying, but certainly was a revenue reduction for us from using Wolf Swamp Fields, that's all. Okay, well, so we have a, a proposal now for road closure application, which we need to vote on, and I was wondering if anybody had a motion to approve this.
Yeah, so I, um, my computer froze up, but, uh, so, yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the application for road closure for this, um, women's lacrosse tournament that will be held on, um, Saturday, May 6th, Saturday, May 6th, yeah, from 7:30 to 5:00.
Can we just make that contingent upon the requirement set by the police department?
Right, with contingent upon requirements set by the police department for, for, um, for the, second, yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
All those in favor? Okay, the vote is four zero, passes. Mr. Rice, thank you very much for attending. Good luck with your tournament.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right.
Next, next item on our agenda is a somewhat routine request, request that we do every year for the Center School Field Day road closure application, uh, and so looking for a motion on the Center School road closure.
Yeah, I'll make a, a motion to, uh, you know, close the, uh, the street for the, uh, School Field Day held on June 2nd with a rain date, uh, June 5th, from 8:45 AM till 2:30 for the Center School Carnival.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion, a second. I guess my only comment or question was, the verbiage in the, in the, in the, uh, application said it was gonna be closed from the front of the school to Longfellow Drive, but the map shows it closed at a different location, closed all the way down to Colton Place. So I'm just wondering, not that we-
It should be from Longfellow to, um, where the driveway starts to go to the gym?
So it's-
Which is Colton.
Which is Colton Place, yeah.
That's, that's fine. I, I, I think we just need to make sure that we understand what it is.
Yep.
We've always proved that it's probably always been closed the same way, but I think the verbiage was different when, in fact, the map was more, more specific.
Right.
That's, that's fine, okay. There any other comments or concerns?
No.
Hearing none? Take a vote. All those in favor of road closure permit? Any opposed? Vote is four zero to approve the Center School Field Day road closure. Thank you. We have now a, a request for a one-day liquor license application for the LACCF, Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve a one-day liquor license for the music lecture event to be held at the Adult Center on Thursday, May 25th, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, vote is four oh, the liquor license is approved. And finally, a discussion on special counsel for Maple Road Plaza, and I guess, I don't know if that's Lynn? Is that you, or?
Yeah, I can start it off, and, um, I'll probably look to Corinne to add some more detail. Uh, so in preparation for the zone change article that will be coming to the annual town meeting, and also with the planning board reviewing the site design review for the rebuild of the plaza, um, we have learned that town council will not be able to represent the town in any matters that have to do with this due to a conflict of interest with the owner of the parcel. So in anticipation of potentially needing some legal assistance, we have started the discussion on, um, special counsel. Uh, we have not identified one that we can actually move forward with at this point. We had an initial conversation with another firm who also had a conflict. So I don't actually have a name to present you tonight, uh, but this was on the agenda before I learned of that additional conflict. Um, I, so I do anticipate, though, at some point in the very near future, I will be bringing you a name to designate, uh, as special counsel, so that the town could, uh, um, get some legal services from, uh, another firm. And if you have specific questions, we could attempt to answer those right now, or if Corinne, you had something you wanted to add here, um, you can feel free to jump in. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, now Lynn, we are currently, uh, have a relationship with Jack Egan for, um, the DPW situation. Could, is that something that he could step into, 'cause we already have that kinda relationship with him?
Potentially. I can definitely explore that as an option.
Can't afford it.
Yeah, well, there might be less expensive options, but, but we have a go, ongoing relationship with him, so, for this project, so.
And, and Lynn, this, the, the extent of the engagement of this special counsel would be essentially to get this discussed and voted at the town meeting? It wouldn't go beyond that, or is that your anticipation?
We have a couple areas that we think this may need some legal review. One is, depending on what the outcome is at town meeting for the rezoning, uh, you, you know, it's hard to predict what could happen there. Um, and then the other is, with a redevelopment like this, we're reviewing the zoning bylaws, and, uh, there has been some question of interpretation of a bylaw. And, um, while I think we have, um, settled that at the moment, um, I do anticipate there will be further questions as this process starts to move along.
Would this person also provide counsel to those, to our planning board? Is that, or is that the intent as well? Or is that a straightforward, you're?
Yes, for interpretation of zoning bylaws or, um, planning board regulations.
If required.
Right.
All right, and, and what's the, what's, is, is because we've been engaging, uh, somebody as an attorney, it would require a select board vote to, to, to make that engagement, that legal engagement?
Yes, so select board, um, is the authority for town council, and that extends out to any sort of special legal counsel we hire. So you've done it in the past, I'm anticipating you did it for, um, the DPW matter that predated me. Um, but you also did it when we, uh, entertained, uh, um, the new gas council, when we switched firms. So this would be similar to that.
Okay, so you'll, you anticipate coming back to, I mean, obviously, we- Okay. So you'll, you anticipate coming back to, I mean, obviously, we, we need to have a meeting prior to being able to engage this, whether it's an individual or a, a law firm. I, I would just offer you that if, if need be, we would hold a special meeting to do that, so that we can get somebody in on a timely manner, rather than wait till the next select board meeting, if that would be delaying the, the hiring of, of somebody, because we don't meet that often. There's only a couple more meetings before the next town council, town meeting, right? So I, 'cause I think we'd wanna hire them, get them on board, bring them up to speed and not wait for the select board meeting. So if need be, just, you know, we can get together on two days' notice to vote on this.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? I mean, I can't imagine not approving it, but we, we can't pre-authorize this. So we've gotta wait for Lynn to bring us a, a name.
All right.
All right?
Right.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Any other comments?
Nope. It's moved to adjourn.
Yeah, I, this is, this is great. So I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Our next meeting is, is, uh, actually, it's May 6th.
First.
May 1st, right? It's Monday, May 1st, 7:00 PM. Any, which is the meeting before our, our town meeting, and I assume that our...
Rebecca.
Yeah, our moderator, town moderator will be here. Okay. Take a motion to, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Folks, thank you very much. See you eight on May 1st, same time, same station. Thanks a lot.